Great. I called the Board of Selectment meeting, our special meeting for December 9th, 2024 to order at 6:30 PM. Okay. We have our agenda pretty all set out. It's kind of, this is the discussion portion now on our next steps for the track enforcement safety devices. So I could shout out with one of the things we were looking at as we started looking at the process we do for a town hearing and then to a town meeting. And with the, the numbers of people, the questions, the follow-on, the shortness of the time period that we looked at between hearing and a town meeting and a town vote for early December for like last, actually it would have been last Friday. We realized that there probably was needed a little bit more time to educate, for education, for people to ask questions, for think people to look at. And in the meeting, so I was looking at that, I said, well, maybe we should actually look at a referendum. Now, we, we kind of assume that we would need to have some kind of a more formal voting than we often have in a town meeting, which is raise your hand and all in favor, things like that. Probably go to a paper ballot, but this, I kind of thought maybe we really ought to look at exercising a referendum. It seems to be the type of question that we're looking at that really engenders a lot of participation, a lot of people's interest, and finding the best way to get as many people involved in the vote, involving the education, understanding what it is we're really trying to do. And then to actually make an informed vote, and then actually to take the pulse of the town. So we looked at, at the referendum and what we proposed, we've had our town council look at our referendum, look at the ordinance. And so we're looking at proposing that with the board, to the board, I am actually, and, and have some more discussion on what we think is the best way forward. And then actually try to move this to something that I think would, would be a better way of gauging the town's total involvement in what they would like to do with this. So with that, I'll open up to any other questions from my board members, fellow members, selectmen.
Were you able to find out how much a referendum would cost?
Referendum costs just about the same amount. Well, it would cost a little bit more because it's a full-time. It'd be about the same amount as it would be for a day of voting. And that would be, gosh, I forgot the actual amount. Joyce, do you have that amount? I think I'd asked Teresa that, but I don't remember actually seeing her actual numbers. But we do, I knew that we do have it. We did check the budget with, I did on Friday before I left, that we do have money enough for a referendum in our budget. The exact amount, I can't remember. To be honest, we did, I don't remember the exact number. But I know we have enough to cover what would normally be a day of voting and within the, within our, our registered voters account, so.
And what is, what are you considering a day of voting? What would the voting start and what would it end?
It could start anywhere. That's the referendum does allow us, the state, I did check this as well, because I remember you, it said, maybe we could do a different time period than eight, than six in the morning to eight at night. That's our normal voting day. We could shorten it, we could adjust it, we could move it to just about any time that we care to, to actually have it open for a referendum. So it could be, I think, Lynn, you may have said something like 12 to eight.
Yeah.
Sure of that, or, or 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, or whatever it is, things like that. Also, because this is a referendum and the state allows it, there's the opportunity for absentee ballots. And since we have enough time and the, and the limit on that is, or the minimum amount is three weeks between the time we vote on a referendum, to actually it's held, which we do have three weeks. We could actually mail out absentee ballots. You wouldn't have to just stop in and pick it up. We could actually publicize it to those individuals who might be away for the holidays, who might be coming back just a little bit after January. You want to make sure that they had a vote in on this. We could, we could service, serve them with, service them with absentee ballots as well by mail. So it would be just like a regular election. We would open the ballot, the absentee ballots up within the next couple of days. And then, you know, send out notices to people if they cared to ask for one, they could have an absentee ballot mailed to them.
I think this is a good idea. I just know that there's a lot of interest. Some people who don't really pay attention too closely to what we do here sometimes, they are currently. So, so I think a referendum is, is the way to go here. There's a lot of interest. And since it's the holiday season, some people aren't around, there has been some interest in absentee voting as well. So, so if, if there is money for this, Marty, if you say there is.
There is, and I apologize. Lynn had asked that, and I had asked, I'm digging around in my files. I only have certain things here today. I probably have another piece of paper sitting on my desk somewhere, actual number, but I can't remember what it is offhand. I don't want to give a big number. But we will, I will inform you and the board afterwards as to what we, depending on the, the time. If we decide that we want to do it a different time than 6:00 AM to, to 8:00 PM, if we want to change it to something 12 to eight or whatever, because we do have absentee ballots, we could do that. Then we'd probably have a better idea of what the actual ROB cost would be. I do know that they are available, that the both registered voters, Democrats, Republicans are available on, but we're proposing on the seventh of, that Tuesday, the seventh of January. They're both available that day. As part of the other issue, I know, and then what date would be the best way to do it? But trying to make sure that everybody is available, both to, to hold the referendum and then, and then to deal with the absentee ballots.
Did you ask about other days? Because I have real reservations about doing it on a Tuesday. I, I just think that's, I, I went back and looked at some of our referendum numbers. I did it really quick and I don't, it's not that comprehensive, but I did look at this year's Region One Budget referendum, which is on a Tuesday. It was only 74 voters who took the opportunity to vote. Two years ago, that, that same referendum was only 68 voters. So Tuesdays have not been a common day, other than the Region One vote, and, and people don't really come out for the Region One vote. The two big referendums that I remember are the, the one on, I believe it's Thursday, it was Thursday, December 15th, 2022, on the School Resource Officer. That was a total of 398 voters. So that was definitely a good, a good sampling. And then the other one, I know this is going back a ways, but we don't do that many referendums. On Friday, August 9th, 2013, the referendum on Kent Francis land purchase for $110,000 grant, that was 491 voters. So that was a Friday. And that I know was purposely done on a Friday because they wanted to make sure that as many people as possible could vote. And I don't remember if there were absentee ballots involved in either one.
I think the point, yeah, I appreciate the point you're making, Lynn, but also it's the question itself. I think it's driving as many people involved as, as the actual day. We just had an election on a Tuesday that had some of the largest voter turnout because of the question of who people wanted to vote. And I think that's, that's part of the issue. I think also with the, adding the element of absentee ballots. I don't know of a time we've actually used absentee ballots before to cover anyone that might not be able to make it. Whatever time, I apologize, sorry, that, sorry. Anytime that, you know, we, we decided would entail the referendum hours. I think having the absentee ballot and advertising that, you know, might also increase the, the total number of votes. So, you know, Tuesday is, I don't know, to me, I don't, I don't think the day as matters as much unless we're doing it in person. And I would agree with Friday would always be my choice because it does seem to encapsulate our weekend voters as well, residents, as well as our, our full-time here. But I think with the, with the question itself is going to get people out, and I think with the ability to have the absentee ballot, I don't see an issue doing it on a different day.
Did you ask if the registrars are available on that Friday?
I, I did not ask them. They're available on the 10th. The other part is that the next Thursday is another meeting for the annual meeting. So pushing another meeting, another vote that close. I knew that they were available on the 16th. I did not ask if they were available. I initially on the 10th was a, was a thought. I think we had actually mentioned that in one of our meetings. But with the actual vote, a referendum vote, and I think, you know, with the absentee ballot in, no, I didn't, I didn't ask them specifically. Let me ask, let me connect to the keeper of our notes. Joyce, did you hear anything from them? I don't remember. I was talking to Darlene about this, but I didn't, I didn't specifically talk to Teresa about this.
The only, the only date that I confirmed was the 7th.
It was the 7th.
Other date, correct.
Okay.
I wish she'd asked. I really think, I understand the concerns about having two, two voting opportunities so close together. I understand that. Normally when we go to referendum, we have a town meeting that adjourns to referendum. Are we going to have to do that?
We do not have to do that. We can make the motion in the motion tonight, and I've drafted with it, with the, with the lawyer, our legal counsel, the wording that allows us to go from this meeting to a referendum, to actually move from a, the questions from a town meeting to a town referendum. We can do that here tonight.
That's new.
Yeah, it's just for, that was a question I did ask because we did have that question with, with, both with Darlene and with, with our attorney, Randy DeValle, about, do we have to actually do that? Do we have to actually reconvene after, you know, at all for any other reason? And he said, no. He said that it's not necessary if we go directly to a referendum from a Board of Selectment meeting. That, you know, in our motion, we called for a, a move to a referendum from a town meeting. You can do that as long we've had here, as long as we've had the hearing, which we have.
Yeah. That also means we wouldn't have an opportunity to present additional information. There were a number of questions that were raised at the hearing. So that means we would need to email out, put out on the, on the website, sort of a Q and A type thing, maybe an additional presentation. Because I think we left things hanging where we didn't actually answer every single thing that people were asking of us.
The only thing that I went back and looked at it, the only thing that was potential, and I haven't heard back from Chris Harrington, is did he want to see the actual raw numbers that we had on the graph? All other questions I believe were answered. I, I don't know. I'd have to go back and look again. I think some of them were such things as why can't we put stop signs up? Why couldn't we put a, you know, a, a speed bump and so on? I don't know. There are other questions about the charges and so on that I think were answered. I, I don't know. But yes, okay, regardless of whether there were questions, issues brought up in the hearing, that we could go back and, and reiterate. I totally agree with you, Lynn. You know, let me say that.
Well, I'll just give you one example. It might not have been a specific question, but you had talked to us all along that those speed cameras can be moved eventually. We didn't talk about that in the hearing. We didn't explain that, yes, we have to give the State Department of Transportation a plan, and we have to say they're going to be there for three years. Well, we can actually adjust that plan. We didn't talk about that. And then after three years or after 18 months, we can move them. So, and we can move them to town roads and we can, or we could move them to a different spot on a state road. So that's in something that people were asking, why are we just so focused on Main Street? Well, we're not. It's just, this is where we're starting.
Right.
That's just an example of more information that could be shared with residents that might, who knows, might change their minds.
True. I know that when people, we did mention the ability to buy more cameras with any kind of proceeds from the citations to put on additional roads. And everything would have to be changed. Matter of fact, one of the, when I went to the CCM meeting last week, I sat with the Director of this program for CT DOT and found a lot more that's actually buried in it, of course. And including pedestrian zones and things like that that are new to the, to the state regarding state roads in small towns and so on. So there's a lot more that, that can be done. But yeah, I think we can put more information out of that nature. Yeah, absolutely, Lynn, absolutely. And we could sit together and, you know, even figure out something. And we could have another special meeting if you wanted to and come out with something we felt was appropriate. Get that out within the next week or, you know, a few days. But yeah, definitely there's a lot more that needs to probably be out and answer, and be available for answering questions.
I'd be open to another special meeting. Just talking about that. That'd be important.
We could, we could put together some stuff. I, I know somebody who's pretty good at putting out social media stuff. Talking to you, Lynn. Actually, we, you could try to put newer stuff, new stuff out on that as well. Yeah. Okay. Excuse me. Okay. Anything else? Questions?
Be okay on the day?
I don't love the day. Really don't. I think it's. He didn't ask, so we don't know if the ROBs are even available. We can't set a date for referendum. We don't know the registrar's.
Well, again, it gets down to, I, I really think that what's going to drive it is, is the question itself, as well as the date and, and, and the time of the ref. What would you guys think would be a time of a referendum? Let's, let's talk about that, you know, maybe the relation to the referendum. Would it be, would you think a 12 to eight would be a, a better time? You don't have to get anybody up.
Well, I wanted to know how much it costs so I could see the difference, you know, because I know the majority, the majority of the cost is personnel hours. So, but I don't really know how many people have to be there, and I, I don't have a feeling for how much it costs. So if, if you made a calculation based on 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM, I think we should probably go with those hours because that's the maximum amount of time.
Yeah, that's a maximum, I mean, that's maximum a town that, that says we have, we should, or could have it open till, I mean, you could, actually, we could go longer if you want to. But it's, it's, it's been the standard for 6:00 AM to 8, 8:00 PM, but we can change it. I mean, I did, I did check on that one specifically. I, I don't think the cost right now, we do have enough and we don't have any more big meetings. You know, I think that our elections or anything else, referendums that we have coming up, except the budget one at the, at the end of the year, and that's, and that's already covered. We did put a lot of extra money in this year, right, was to cover early voting. Some of that is covered. So we used a lot of it, but there's still, there's still some question, so, you know, excuse me, still some costs coming in. But it seems that we're going to be in, in better shape because we did have that planning that a lot of other towns have just thrown that in. But we seem to have done a pretty decent job of trying to be fiscally smart about how we, we budget our, our V's across the year. So I don't, I don't see, in talking to Barbara, that whatever it is, if we wanted to go to 12 to eight, we want to go to six to eight, whatever we want to do that, we're going to be okay to, to cover that for whatever day. But we, we looked at the 7th just because it gave us a time that a normal Tuesday vote. I think the question really is what's going to drive people and the, and the ability to have the absentee ballots, I think, are pretty significant for people to be able to, to vote if they can't actually make it that day. So whatever, if you'd like to go 6:00 AM, the actual legal notice that we have on the references, 6 to 8, I mean, we, we put it in 6 to 8, but we can change it. And then, and then modify, you know, obviously have it, send it to Darlene with the actual hours in it. But what, it, it's whatever you guys think would be the best way to reach people and allow them to vote.
If we have a funding board, as you said, and this is standard 6 to 8, I don't mind doing 6 to 8. I mean, there may be plenty of people who would like to vote before they go to work.
Sure. There's that.
You know, so if we're, if we're doing something slightly different from other referenda, I, I'd rather not do something slightly different. You know, if the standard time is that, I'd like to stay with it if we can. I mean, you know, but if it's a huge savings, if that's an issue, but it doesn't seem to be so.
A couple of hours of saving is six hours of, no, it's not going to be significant, a few hundred dollars. It's not, not that that isn't important in our budget, but it's not, we have that in our election budget. We do have that. So it's not going to make a difference. So I'm, I'm okay with 6:00 AM to, to 8:00 PM then, to run the full, the full referendum day.
I don't have the agenda in front of me. Do we have public comment on this agenda?
We do. We do have public comment.
Is it after our vote or?
It's, it's always at the end. Yeah, we did have at the end. But I can, we can modify, I mean, I will, I guess I can allow to, the public comment, we can make a motion at any time, even with the, as long as you stay in the motion that we're, we're dealing with on our agenda. But if there's, if there's public comment, I'm, I'll allow it tonight. If there's other people that, that want to weigh in.
I know we got people here and I see faces popping up, so there may be people who want to speak. I don't know. You guys want to speak?
No. We're here for education.
Okay. They don't want to speak. Nothing to say is good. Okay. Thanks. Been the longer hour, so won't be challenged by anybody.
There you go.
Yeah, I agree.
That makes sense. Okay, I agree with you, Glenn, so.
Want to ask if there anybody online who wants us to talk?
Anybody else? Okay. All right. Okay. All right, then. Then I will make a motion. The motion says, and Joyce, I actually typed it out so I can send it to you, with whatever modification we might make into it. But it says, motion is being that a public hearing was duly warned and conducted on the ordinance and questions presented for voter consideration on 22 November 2024, and the Board of Finance considered and approved proposal, proposed supplemental appropriation of $46,296. Accordingly, I moved that the following questions be moved, removed from town meeting consideration and submitted to eligible voters by way of a referendum on 7 January 2025 between the hours of 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM. And the questions are, shall the town of Kent enact a traffic enforcement safety devices ordinance as on file in Town Clerk's Office, thereby authorizing the deployment of automatic traffic enforcement safety devices, ATESD, within the town of Kent at school and pedestrian safety zones and in such other places approved by the Connecticut Department of Transportation to monitor and record motor vehicle speeds and to permit the imposition of fines for speed violations of at least 10 miles per hour in excess of the posted speed limit? Second question would be, in the event question one is answered in the affirmative, shall the town of Kent appropriate the sum of $46,296 to purchase two ATESD, ATES devices for deployment within the town of Kent? Those are the two questions.
A second.
Second, okay. Any discussion in that? Okay. All in favor?
Yes.
Hi.
Bye. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. Now, any other public comment on anything we have done tonight that you would like to make comments on, you're, or open this to anyone?
I have a question, Marty.
Oh, there we go. Hi, Lynn.
Hi. Since you just, since the second part of that, the referendum question will be about the cost, does that mean that this doesn't now have to go out to bid?
No, it, it, this is actually what, we have to go out to bid, but we'd have to meet that cost because that's all the, the Board of Finance authorized, so.
I didn't realize.
The max we could do would be.
Specific amount. I thought it was just 46.
Yeah, 46, actually, that's what they, they voted in their discussion. I know that the vote was recorded as $46,296, but the motion intent was for up to two cameras with that, so.
Yes.
But yeah, we'll still go out to bid. The camera cost, so go out to bid. Everything else will go out to bid, but the only direct cost to the town was for the cameras upfront.
Okay.
Okay.
Can you clarify about the cost? Because when you gave us paperwork, there was a $2,000 per month fee. Isn't that a cost?
That would be that company's projected cost that that $15 would cover, or whatever up to, they expect to get that much to make their ends meet per month. But again, that was at only one company's explanation of what, what, what cost would be to them, what the cost would be to, that they would expect the town to bring in over the, the course of a month in, in any payments to them to process. So they pay, they, it's, the state law does not allow them to, allow anyone to have to give out as many tickets or to say they have to give out so many tickets to pay them, that they have to actually give a cost, but it's, it's all been covered. There's no upfront cost to us. It would be all based on what, what citations were, were issued and what revenue was brought in off those citations.
I just feel uncomfortable not telling the voters that there is a cost for processing those, that stuff, that, that data. And, and once again, that was not brought up at the hearing, that there is this $2,000 cost. I understand it's going to be covered by the revenue, but it's still a cost for this program. For this, from this particular company.
Correct.
You know, but any company that we actually contract with is going to probably charge us to process these things. I mean, it's only logical.
Absolutely. And, and part of that is what the state allows us to additionally charge that $15 online cost. I mean, once we get, okay, if the ordinance allows us to make those adjustments within the ordinance, within the Board of Select persons here to actually figure out how we wanted to charge that, if we decided that any in-person payments, we are going to take the, we're going to cover the $15 out of the $50, that would be up to us to do. So there's different ways we can actually cover all those costs are, any costs that would be for processing would, would come out of the actual revenue that we brought in. So there was not a positive charge that we would have to put in the budget to cover anything. It would all come from actual fees itself.
That's not how things are always done though. I mean, it's not like a net thing. Usually you have the expenses and then you have the revenue. So that's different from what people are used to, Marty.
Well, it depends. I mean, if you, if you've been in business, you said oftentimes you have those people that, or those organizations that, and that functions that come in. But yeah, it was in the, it was in the presentation we had in the, in our meetings too, in there. I know that, I think you brought that up or someone brought that up when we had our board meeting to, with the, with the ATSD or the processing piece to it from the Dakrotech, is it, I think is the name of the company, about that. That was in their presentation.
I just think we should be upfront with people and, you know, like I had said, I think we should do an example of, this is how much money we might raise. This is how much it's going to cost, you know, just to make, how much it could cost. Everything would have to be could because we don't know how much we're going to raise and how much.
That, I thought, I thought the gentleman from Brandon, I think from Dakrotech, actually answered that question in the hearing. He did bring in what had been estimated amount of, of citations would go out and so on, and what the potential revenue would come in per month. Thought that was in the, explained that in the.
I don't think it was clear enough to people. I think it could be clearer.
Okay. Well, we can, you know, bring that up when we want to do, actually send more information out. We could actually, you know, make sure that's explained as well. Sure, absolutely.
Would be good.
Okay. Okay. Any public comment? I'm sorry, Lynn, another question?
I am concerned about us not getting together to have another talk about this and finish the questions that were given, that were asked of you, such as the graph that were. The first, basically the one graph that they showed was a timeline where the speed limit sign had just gotten changed. And actually, a week of it, of that graph time may not even have been changed yet. So I don't think that was very fair to look at and say that there was 31,000 people that would have gotten ticket type thing. So I am concerned that we're not going to have another hearing or, you know, the vote, because at the vote, we'd still be able to discuss. A referendum, we can't discuss. And the second thing was, you said you were waiting for Chris to get back to you, but I think he already asked his question at the meeting. So he's waiting for you to get back to him with the weekend information.
Okay, I'll take that and then send him all that data. I thought, yeah, I said I would send it to him if he wanted me to send it to him. I did not. If he, affirmatively, I didn't catch that, Lynn, so I will make sure I send it to him tomorrow.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Apologize. Hmm. Okay.
I, I have.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Somebody else?
I have a question. It's about collection and enforcement. I, I'm a little thinking you're a little naive if you think you just send out a ticket and everybody turns around and writes you a check and sends it on back. I wish you luck.
Okay.
But is that what the company is telling you? All you have to do is issue a ticket and the money comes floating right back?
Well, the majority of information that I've seen is that, yes, people do respond. Those in state is, is a civil matter, so it's not a criminal. There's no, we're not. Right now, I mean, we'd have to decide the town if we felt it, that we needed to go after people. That would be a decision that the board would look at based on the ordinance, either to do a collection agency or something, but that's something. But that's something that, again, is, is social contracts, which is what we live by in the United States. We often have people, you know, abide by speed limit because that's part of the social contract. And we're finding out that people like to push that a little bit. So having said that, there is an opportunity for people not to, who do not fulfill their civil liabilities. They could be, there is a potential, I think, in the state statute that allows for, for towns to go to the Department of Motor Vehicles and say, hey, this person hasn't paid five speeding tickets or whatever it may be, two, three, four, five, whatever it might be, the number. And then the state could then turn around and say, we're not registering your vehicle until you, you know, until you fulfill your civil obligation to pay your, your bills to the town. I mean, there, there is ways to look at that as well.
And I think, Marty, if you're going to be upfront with people, you should say that probably is the way you will go. Simply because I, you are going to have to have muscle behind this to collect. I, I think it's wonderful to think the majority of people will probably pay. I understand that. But we're talking a big numbers here. You're talking about a lot of tickets. I, I just think you have to be upfront about it. There will be enforcement. It will be however you decide to have this enforced, either monetary or it goes on somebody's registration or points on their insurance, whatever it is.
Doesn't go to point. Debbie, I can't tell you again.
It has to have some backup. You've got to have backup. It may not be points.
It's not insurance. It's not.
Go, you have to have it collected. Okay. Thank you.
Mostly, right. Thank you. Okay. Right? Sure. We can, we can look at.
It's not, you can look. You should look.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, she's got a point, Marty, that it would be smart for us to make those decisions before we ask people to vote. Because then they know what the plan is. I mean, part of the problem was that people were, were upset about the fact it didn't seem like the plan was solid. That there was, there was too much, well, we could do this and we could do that. And that, that made people uncomfortable. So I, I, I agree with Debbie. We should probably have a meeting where we lay things out that, you know, we can, you know, you've said many times, we can change things. So we can start one way and then we can change it. But I think we need to be really clear on what the plan is.
Okay. All right. I mean, what I heard was a lot of people saying I should be allowed to speed because it's late at night. Or I should be allowed to speed because I'm coming up to my weekend home. I heard people actually say that, that why should we not? I mean, it's only been since April that we changed. I'm sorry, Debbie, this is my turn to speak.
Sorry.
In my response to the people that I've heard throughout the two plus hours I sat there. There were people that had said, but I want to be able to do what I want to do. Why the town, I didn't get to vote on the forty to thirty, or the forty-five to thirty-five, I didn't get to vote on thirty-five to twenty-five speed limit. Well, someone sure voted on it because it, the state approved it. It went through a very, you know, circuitous and deliberate accountability to get that speed limits changed. It didn't happen just arbitrarily. So there's obviously was a concern somewhere in the town with speed limits in the middle of town. And this is what we're looking at. It's the speed in the middle of town where we have more people walking around and people driving at what I believe is an excessive rate of speed coming into town, both the north and the south. So, but yes, we can answer, we can continue to answer questions to as many people's satisfaction as possible. And, and I'm willing to do whatever we need to do. I'm willing to help support that. Whatever we need to do to make people feel, at least they understand what the real intent is and how we're going to try to go forward. So.
And, and just to be clear, Marty, I'm not saying that people should speed. That's not my issue.
I didn't say, I didn't think, I never heard you say that. I know that. I know that. Okay, so, but I think in this, we, in the information that we go forward, we can discuss more about what's going on. We haven't, like you said, the, the whole implementation plan that we have to give to the state is still open for discussion and development. I mean, that's, that's part of exactly the, the numerous pages that we have to put together to actually go to, to the state with this. So some of that will be there. I think, Lynn, to your point, if, if we need to be a little more specific about what can happen. I don't think we've sat down and had, had the deliberation over what we think is the best way to actually enforce this. And we probably need some, some legal decisions on that as well. That's, that's part of the, part of the developmental process. So, yeah, I would agree with you on that.
How, how much time do we need before our next meeting to compile this kind of information? I mean, should we, should we meet next week about this? Should we?
We have a meeting next week. We have a regular meeting.
We have a regular meeting, but do we want a special meeting for this? Or do we want to do this at the regular meeting? I mean, we just talked about a special meeting, but maybe we don't do that.
Let me throw some ideas around and see what we can come up with tomorrow. Let me get back in the office and chew on this and see how we can better do it, get information out, and then, and then meet with you guys and then set up a time to meet to discuss that. How's that? I mean, because, yeah, I think we do need, we do need three of us to sit down and figure out how we want to put out the information on, on the referendum, put out the information. Any lingering questions? You know, get together and put our heads together and think about what people have asked about. You know, and, and really get down to see what we can do to, to come up with some, some answers for people forward and some better information if we are lacking some of that. I mean.
And just, just, just to state the obvious, as of tomorrow, this vote is four weeks from tomorrow.
Correct.
So if we want to get, you know.
Well, we've already said it. So we've taken care of the absentee ballot timelines.
No, 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 I know. But, but if we want additional information, folks, that you want to think about and to digest, to consider, we probably want to do that sooner than later and probably before the holidays really ran out.
Oh, definitely, definitely. Yeah, next, Monday and Tuesday, I have a medical procedure, so I will be out of the office. But yeah, we can, we can meet later this week if you wanted to. You know, it depends on what you have. I know Lynn's more, you know, we're going to have to, I think, look at our schedules now that Lynn's traveling a little bit more for work and I'll to make sure that it's, it's not as, we're up to, make sure we can meet with her there because we, we don't want to.
Yeah, I mean, I am, I am free on Wednesday and Thursday night.
Okay.
If that helps.
This Wednesday?
Yeah.
I am free this Wednesday night.
Okay.
Six thirty.
I think we can, can we, we can, can we warn a meeting, special meeting by then?
Twenty-five, twenty-four hours.
And, yeah, twenty-four. Put the agenda together. Okay. I think I can do that too. Right now, yeah, I think so. Should be, I have my calendar here. Yeah, all right. Let's do that. And I'll, I'll get one more than that and get the agenda out tomorrow. Okay, I'll throw you guys notes on the agenda to make sure we put it the right way before we.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Six thirty still time?
Six thirty is good for me. Yes.
That's a good consistent time.
Okay. I don't think I have anything that night. Okay. All right. Any more public comment? Well, I know there's a few more people. I hear some dinging going in the back. Is there?
Sharon? Yeah, the only thing I would, I would ask is, from what I gather, there is a form that you have to submit to the state with all the implementation. I think sort of do that first and then give that. And, you know, in other words, then you can't be criticized, the Tammy's not going to be criticized to say, well, wait a minute. You didn't, you put that in the implementation, but it wasn't what you informally sent out and you didn't let us discuss this yet again. I think the, the safest and most transparent way would be to do it backwards. Do the implementation first among the three of you, how you would get that form out. And then either paraphrase it or just cut and paste it.
The only thing is the DOT has to approve that implementation plan. So we can put together our ideas, but we won't know.
But at least you're, you have done that. That, that this is how you have envisioned it. And then they come back and say, no, well, then, you know, it's not your.
That, that form entails a lot of data, highway traffic safety data, our long-term, any, like the, the whole plan for how we requested the reduction speed limits that has to be put in it. It was told me because they're aware of that in Kent. So we, we have to make sure we include that. Anything we've done with, with traffic calming, any, anything we've had done before, when we put up our, our speed, you know, your speeds, your speed is signs, things like that all has to be in there. There's a lot of data, just data for years that has to be brought into that plan. It's kind of interesting. And then they get up to sixty days to decide what they want to do with the plan. And then come back and say, we like this part. We don't like that part. Redo this part. Redo that part. Obviously, you know, so, and they, and it's brand new to that, to the state too. So they're all learning is, is what the gentleman said.
But Marty, Sharon's point is good. You, you should set, you should share it with us. So we at least know.
Oh, absolutely.
Regardless of the data part of it, there's other parts of it that we may be, may help guide us.
Absolutely. Absolutely. No, we'll put it, you know, no, absolutely. It would, you know, I would share it with the board for sure. Absolutely. Oh, yeah.
But I mean, just Sharon, so.
Well, no, all the parts, any parts that, yeah, we would, I'll need to agree on how we wanted to actually put it together that we, yeah, certainly would go to a meeting with us to do it. So, okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hearing no other public comment? Go motion, make, I'll take a motion to adjourn? Okay. Great. All in favor?
Hi.
I will have the, the thing in the office as of tomorrow. So for you guys to, actually, you don't need to, you don't need to sign it. I'm sorry. We, yeah. I just have to get this to Darling tomorrow. So we'll get that.
And can you make sure that Joyce puts it, the last legal notice didn't actually go on the town's website?
Town's website, yeah. This will definitely.
We need to make sure that happens for this one.
Yeah, we'll make, I'll make sure definitely that gets on there. Sure.